Middleborough Board of Selectments meeting for August 11th, 2014.
Please rise and join us with the Fledges' beliefs.
Fledges' beliefs to the flag in the United States of America and to reinvolve all just citizens on one mission, other than individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are being taped and broadcast live on Middleborough Community Cable Access and rebroadcast on Verizon and Comcast. Does any member of the board have anything under unanticipated?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McKinnon.
A couple of weeks ago, we had an assessment center for the selection of, to go through the selection of the police chief. And one of the people who was involved in this, there's been a little mischaracterization, I think. It was an illusion that he's withdrawn, this would be Sergeant Beals. Sergeant Beals had to make a decision. He had a situation, a family situation that required him to leave the assessment. It's not a withdrawal. He didn't withdraw because withdrawing sounds like it's a, you know, well, that question's too hot, I can't handle it. It's more of a, he had to make a decision about a situation. He put his, his family first and, you know, you have to admire that. So I just want to make sure that this is known, you know, he couldn't keep, couldn't continue in this particular process, but that does not mean he should be precluded from any future processes, should another police chief come about or vacancy come about. And I just want that cleared up. He did not withdraw. It was a situation he had to make a decision on. He took care of his family. I don't see any issue with that at all. So, just wanted to put that out there.
All right. I completely agree, and I don't think what happened has any reflection on Mr. Beals in any way, shape, or form. Anyone else have anything unanticipated? Any member of the audience have anything under unanticipated? No? All right. Announcements and recognitions. Does any member of the board have anything under announcements and recognitions? Mr. Delfi?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to mention that I attended Massa Sawyer Community College, had a tour of their facility and luncheon, and Secretary of Education, Matt Malone, was down and had nothing but high praise for the facility, as did I. It is the premier EMT training spot in this area in southeastern Mass. He praised, Secretary Malone also praised because it's a wonderful next step and between the workforce and education. And I just want everyone to be aware that we have this facility right here in Middleborough. So, it was a very nice afternoon, and that's all I have.
All right. Any other member of the board have anything under announcements and recognitions? Any member of the audience have anything under announcements and recognitions? All right. Minutes, I would entertain a motion to approve the regular minutes for July 28th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, passes unanimously. I would entertain a motion to authorize the chairman or his designated to sign the warrants for weekending August 9th, 2014, and August 16th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, passes unanimously. New business. The fire chief and Brewster Ambulance will talk to us about Smart 911.
Thank you. Good evening.
How you doing, Chief?
Good, very well. Thank you. I hope all of you are as well. On your inquiry some time ago, you asked about Smart 911. I had a little bit of information about it, not a lot. After that, Mark Brewster and his organization, his company, sorted out and has provided that service to the town of Middleborough now at their cost. It's a free service to the citizens. Brewster Ambulance has taken on the cost of the initial setup and the, I would imagine there's an ongoing cost to this factor that is very beneficial to the citizens of Middleborough. Not only in Middleborough, but if they travel anywhere outside of Middleborough that has Smart 911, it also will work outside of Middleborough. So we urge folks to sign up at www.Smart911.com, create a safety profile, and register your phones, either your landlines or cellphones, or both. And anytime that you have an emergency and you dial 911, your safety profile will be displayed to Brewster's emergency medical dispatches, and it will give us vital information that we will have prior to getting to the emergency. Currently, the police is the, the police department in Middleborough is the primary public safety answering point. What happens if it's a medical call or a fire call, they transfer the call to either Brewster Ambulance or to the fire department. With Smart 911, the police function will stay the same. If the call comes into the primary answering point, which is the police department for 911, they transfer the call to Brewster Ambulance. All of this information that you have provided, that is a secure site, you can put as much information as you want, or as little information as you want, will be displayed on their screen in their dispatch center, and they will relay that to either the police or the fire department, whichever department the information is most pertinent to. Maybe both. But, could be medical disabilities, hazards in the home, specialties, you might have a specialty, you need special assistance there, all kinds of information, anything you can dream about, you can put on there. Or you can just put your information, just your primary information, with your health issues, or, you know, it might be difficult, you have somebody on the third floor that has a disability, we might want to know that ahead of time. So we might need extra help to get people out of there. I'd like to let Mark Brewster talk a little further on it. I believe he brought a few other folks, Jeff Maroney and Jeff Jacobson and Mr. Brewster himself, George Brewster. So, I'll let them speak, or if you have any questions for me, I'll try to answer them. But we've been working on this together since you brought it up, and they really took the lead on this, and I give them a lot of credit for doing so. They've taken on the cost of it, and they really pushed forward and made it happen. And we can go live right now, so you just have to do a little training in my department, and we'll be ready to roll. We want to get people to sign up. So we're gonna, before we came here, I discussed the code RED signup that we currently have for us for emergency notification. So we're gonna try to dovetail this together. So, they're gonna do a media blitz and a public relations blitz to get people to sign up and to register for Smart 911. And we're gonna try to dovetail the code RED at the same time, so we can get people to sign up for that as well. So I think it's a great thing. Do you have any questions for me, or?
Yeah, I have Jeff Maroney in the back, who's our communication director, that can answer our questions you guys have. We're really excited to bring to the community, when Allen had brought it up, we did a lot of research on it. Middleborough will be the first community in the Commonwealth to have Smart 911 for the EMS service. There is not another town or city in Massachusetts that has it. So, you know, it's pretty cool to bring it here first. We're excited about it, the technology is great. You know, you guys, and we thank you again, made another investment in us for another three years, we appreciate that, and we want to play it forward. So we felt making the investment back for this for you guys was more than we could do. We want to get out into the local community centers, you know, down at Old Point, set up some stations with laptops, and we can set up the profile for some, for some folks right there. You know, get out to some of the public events you guys are having, again, and try to get the profiles up and running. You know, any, like I said, any questions you guys have, more than happy to answer them. I'm sure one of us up here, there's enough of us, can, we'll have an answer for you.
We really tried to get done before crazy days. Unfortunately, we didn't, we would have had a place set up for that, but this is what it is, we couldn't get it done fast enough. We wanted, they wanted to do it right, as do I. Now, we've got a question.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
To Charlie, to everybody, can we get a one-page summary that we can get into the G and E mailing for the, that goes out to all of the gas and electric customers in Middleborough, and as a way of getting this information out there? If they have electricity, they're getting it.
Yeah, it's a great idea. That was actually one of the things we were going to talk about, is if we could get a, you know, a link on maybe the town website, get something out with the electric bills. I mean, that's a fabulous way to get it out there. You know, it depends on how far you guys want to take it. Across the country and other places they've had, you see when you're entering the, entering the towns, it says entering Middleborough. Someplace across the country have had a Smart 911 community, and it's Smart911.com, it's just a small banner they put right on the end of the sign. You know, that stuff that we can discuss with you guys, on exactly how you want to get it out to the public.
This can also be used in multiple ways, along with the police and fire, so it's not just EMS. Jeff, could probably give you more insight or things like that.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. One of the things that we're so excited about with Smart 911 is the ability to immediately ping any phone on the Smart 911 account. By ping, we mean rebid, or immediately determine the GPS location of that phone. And the key part of this is, we're going to instruct the public, or advise the public that they should really create a head of household account. So if, if I'm a father and I have teenage children that have cellphones, their cellphone numbers should be on the Smart 911 account as well. That allows mom or dad to pick up the phone and dial 911 and say, "My 15-year-old daughter is not where she's supposed to be. She's not answering her phone, she's not answering text messages. I need to know where that phone is." And by the push of a button, I would say 30 seconds, but it's about five. About five seconds, I can immediately pin that phone. The terms and conditions that mom and dad accept when they create their Smart 911 safety profile authorize the rebidding of the phone as often as we want to. And it's available on the three major carriers, Sprint, ATT, Verizon. They're working on agreements with T-Mobile as well, PetroPCS, but the three largest carriers, there's already any agreements in place to do that. So it's very exciting for us to be able to provide that feature to the town level. Again, no other secondary would have a problem.
And you can up, you can upload photographs of your children, or photographs of yourself, or you can also description of your vehicle, license plate number, whatnot. So if you remember more area in your vehicle, you can get, if you dial 911 from your registered cellphone, it could give you a description of your vehicle, the license plate number, in photographs, most photographs, most recent photographs of your children, if that's what you choose to do. It's a completely secure, nationally secure, and nationally recognized system, so I think it's great, it has a lot of features to it. Again, you put as much information as you think you might need.
And as George pointed out before, we're going to be encouraging even more fluid relationship between police, fire, EMS, because the information that we get by the simple entry of case number, Smart 911 case number, into a special website set up for post responders. Anybody in the field, a dispatcher, a police officer, firefighter, paramedic, can immediately see that information that was displayed to us. I won't immediately allay any privacy concerns. After 45 minutes, that case has been locked and nobody can view that information. So it's not like I could say, oh, it's not like I could go home to my family and say, "I should see this case that I was on today." The information expires, not even we, as the provider, have access to that information again. But while the incident is ongoing, a police officer needs to see, where is there a key hidden? This elderly person says, "Oh, there's a key here under the map," they'll be able to see that immediately, immediately access the key. So there certainly are benefits, as well as the privacy concerns there as well.
Privacy and all access.
That's correct.
So it should be confidential.
Anyone else have any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
I'm amazed you guys jumped on this as fast as you did, and that you got it up and running.
I'm amazed you knew about it before we did.
Somebody called me and asked me about it. Yeah, a reporter actually called and asked me. So, I looked into it a little bit, I didn't know much about it. I mentioned it to the chief, you guys lined it up, and once again, you've, and this is a history with you guys, you far exceed your expectations, our expectations. I couldn't be happier with you guys being here in town. You're one of the best decisions I've made, and I'm ecstatic about it. That being said, I like the idea, there are certain people who have a big, they're wary of Big Brother, so where can they find out more information about their privacy concerns and things like that?
On the website, www.Smart911.com. I was on it prior to coming here to read all of privacy and stuff. It's pretty, yeah, just go on the website and see all of that.
So this doesn't work unless I sign up?
That's correct.
Right.
Actually, let me be clear about that. There is a text messaging feature of the system that's actually, it's an enhancement that we have as well. If you call 911, even if you don't have a Smart 911 profile, if the call is dropped, I still have the ability to send a text message back to that phone that says, "This is 911, are you okay?" That means I call them back, they don't answer, they send me the voicemail. I can send them a less intrusive text message that says, "Are you okay? This is 911, call us back," or texts us back, et cetera. So, we will still get what we would call a screen pop of the number that called, and would say, "No profile available." It does, however, allow me to send a text message, SMS if you will, to that phone. So, all is not lost necessarily if they don't have a profile, obviously, if they do, there's so much more information that we have.
And I can, I can give you as much information as I'm comfortable with.
Absolutely correct.
Like, if I just want my name and address, that's fine.
Yes.
But it's helpful to us, as you know, past medical history and medical management and things like that. And with a paramedic, it's good to be able to call more than we need to try to.
Right. I mean, in my situation, I have two small children, let you know what allergies they have, what, if I can, if my wife will let me be the head of the household, I can, I can tell you all sorts of stuff, but.
We were also concerned about information becoming stagnant. We know sometimes how the general public is, and who are we kidding, I know who I am. I'm not necessarily going to want to go on and update my Smart 911 information as often as I probably should. If I don't update my profile in six months, the profile becomes inactive. I'll be notified via text, as well as email, that I need to go on, and at least visit once every six months to make sure that my information is still correct. That means I'm not going to be saying to the chief, "Hiss, huff, huff, by the way, it's an 83-year-old female, and in fact, unfortunately, she passed away," or something along those lines. So the information is as up to date as we can possibly get it, and then we'll deactivate the account after six months, if you don't log on and say, "Yes, this information is still active."
Gives you guys a much better opportunity, rather than running into a situation blind. You have an idea who, who you're looking for, and what they may, what their complications may be.
And it's going to be really important to police and fire as well, for the same reasons. Just a disabled person on the second floor, we get a call for fire there, that's really important information we should know. For the police, there could be a domestic violence situation that's ongoing processing at home. For them to get that information right away, that could be very important, where the person may not be able to relay that over the phone. They might be in a situation where they can't talk about it. So this will give you that history and profile, that could be a situation they go into.
Yeah, it helps us if the 911 call comes in for a call, profile comes up, we know it's a domestic abuse household, maybe he or she was pushed down the stairs, let's send the police with us, you know, so we're not involved into it. So there's a lot to it on the fireside. You know, and I suggest all of you guys go on tonight and sign up for it. There's a spot you put where your kids' bedrooms are in the house, so in the, you know, if there was an event, there was a fire. Firefighter comes, they know the kids are on the left wing of the house, in these back two bedrooms, you know, so they know right where to go and look for the children. You could put where your electric service comes in, your gas, where's the closest fire hydrant. Again, as much as you want to give, it's there, and it's all right on the website if you go. We'll also link it all to our website, hopefully we'll have it up tomorrow. So if anyone has questions on the privacy here, they can also go right to the Brewster Ambulance dot com, and all the information will be right up there as well.
Beautiful. This sounds fantastic. A little science fiction, but it sounds fantastic. Anybody else have any other comments or questions? Before you go, Chief, I just want to say thank you again. I think you've just secured yet another $10,000, about $10,000 grant for the town of Middleborough.
Yeah, $9,435, I believe, for a communication system to help repair our tenants, replace our enclosures in cable in a month or two. Hopefully to help fix our communication issues until we can change our network.
Beautiful. Thanks again for doing such a fantastic job.
Thank you.
I think we're all set. Does any member of the audience have any, any questions or anything?
Well done.
Thanks again. All right. We will have an update, we got in the vacant office space at the Town Hall Annex.
I guess that would be me. Our last meeting, I indicated that I was going to reach out to several firms in the community and outside of the community that specialize in commercial real estate. I did, and I think I found a pretty good fit. Philip Austin came by, he saw the property. He's a gentleman, he's with Best Choice Real Estate, and he is very instrumental in revitalizing downtown Taunton when they started building things up. So he knows what a downtown area needs. He did a complete assessment on the space and the area to find the best and highest use, and of course, if we could get a bank to go in, that would be a no-brainer. Seeing as banks that you walk into are becoming less and less popular with online banking and drive-throughs, definitely he's looking for businesses, services, or merchandise, or food establishments that would have foot traffic, which is exactly what we've been looking for, for downtown. He addressed the issue of parking and pointing out the municipal lots and the street parking that are, that is around there. He doesn't think that will be a problem. He already has reached out to several clients, he has a couple corporations that are interested, he has some nationwide corporations that may put a satellite office in there with services. He also agreed to stay within the town's budget, even though it's significantly under what the standard charge would be of a 10%, 10% of a lease, that would be five years, would be well over $10,000. And he agreed to stay well under that. He did write up an initial contract with, which Charlie and I forwarded to Dan Murray to look over, and that's all I have. If anyone has any questions, I probably have more information.
And Mr. Austin also has local ties to the community.
He does. His son has a mortgage company in town, and his son also ran for the school committee, and Selectman probably knows his son personally, I believe, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Which I didn't realize when I spoke to him. I spoke to him solely because he specializes in this kind of real estate, and he has really far reach. I think we need to go a little further out of town possibly to fill that space, to get something appropriate for the town, so.
Anybody have any questions?
No. Okay, so we're moving ahead.
All right, beautiful. I would entertain a motion to approve the right PS invoice in the amount of $187,954.20 for design development, and to authorize the town manager to sign the invoice.
So moved.
Second.
Charlie?
We continue to work on the design, we're still pointing toward having it completed by October, getting all the paperwork in by October. We're also working, as you'll see later on, the comprehensive wastewater management plan, that's moving along. So, you know, they're going full bore.
All right, beautiful. I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. I would entertain a motion to approve the right PS invoice in the amount of $5,715.30 for pilot testing and to authorize the town manager to sign the invoice.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. I would entertain a motion to approve the right PS invoice in the amount of $10,850.10 for designer invoice and to authorize the town manager to sign the invoice.
So moved.
Second.
Any, I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. I would entertain a motion to approve the right PS invoice for the comprehensive wastewater management plan in the amount of $14,300.
So moved.
Second.
And Charlie, that's just the same thing that you were just mentioning. I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. I would entertain a motion to approve a betterment agreement for 49 Wayham Street in the amount of $16,445.49.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. I would entertain a motion to approve a certificate for fuel storage for Lorden Propane.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions?
Fire chief's been all on board with this? You seen everything? Okay.
Any other, any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. I would entertain a motion to approve and sign the warrant for the state primary.
So moved.
Second.
Allison, do you want to speak to that?
Good evening, how is everybody? I actually didn't have anything on the warrant, except for just letting everyone know, we do have absentee ballots available in the town clerk's office, and you can file for an absentee ballot application up until the day before the election, which would be September 8th at noon time. I also just wanted to let you know, we've also posted on the town website, under employment opportunities, and also reached out to the Democratic Town Committee and Republican Town Committee, that we are looking for election officers to assist us with working at the polls. And anyone who has an interest, if they could contact our office, we'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
All right. And the state primary is going to take place on September 9th?
September 9th, the polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
All right, beautiful. A motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you very much.
I would entertain a motion to appoint John C. Ponte Jr. as an auxiliary police officer.
So moved.
Second.
Any, I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, Chief Gates couldn't be heard tonight, he had a death in the family, but, you know, his memo to you recommends appoint Mr. Ponte to be a reserve admitted officer, he's completed all the necessary training.
All right. Does anybody have any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Entertain a motion to promote Police Officer Gregory E. Trask to the, to Police Sergeant effective August 24th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
And again, Officer Trask was the only eligible candidate for promotion from this particular list, and again, the chief recommends this to you.
Officer Trask, do you have anything to add?
Good evening, no.
All right. Smart me?
Nope. You don't want to add anything?
Good evening. I'm Officer Gregory Trask. I currently work in the schools of the S.A.L.O., but I have kind of made Middleborough my place where I'm going to spend the rest of my career, so I appreciate being here. Thank you.
We appreciate that as well.
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations. Sergeant Trask. I would entertain a motion to approve and sign an agreement with Ocean Spray Cranberries Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, this, as we worked out between the sewer department and Ocean Spray, this is a agreement we've signed from time to time, and council has also reviewed it.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Entertain a motion to authorize the acceptance of state funding for the 2014 Mass Works Everett Square revitalization project, and to authorize the town manager to sign the Mass Works[1701.54] Square revitalization project and to authorize the town manager to sign the Mass Works application certification letter.
So moved.
Second.
How many, what's, hi Jane.
Yeah, I'm here to have any questions.
The third or fourth go with this one?
Yes, it is. This time, though, we're applying for $835,000 to the executive office of housing and economic development. This round, what we're going to do, in the past, we've, we've broken this grant into different tasks. We've done Everett Square, and Oak Street, and the sidewalks. So this year, what we've decided to do is just sort of focus on Everett Square and see if we have better luck with that. We've advanced the design of the, of the square, and we're getting some more important, more matches, so we're hoping this time will be a charm.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. McKinnon?
How complete is our plan?
We're actually, we only have, we have one question left with one of the, one of the abutters, and so after that, the plan will be fairly complete, I think.
Yeah, we have a meeting with them tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah.
So we're, we're trying to get as ready as we can possibly be.
Right.
Will the plans be at 100% if the abutters are raised?
They'll be at 100% next spring to construction. I'm not sure that they won't be at 100%.
But they're probably 50%, 60%, something like that? Okay. Because the state likes to have more done.
They do.
They would like us to do it all and just come in and paint it and give us a buck for it or something, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, is that the, in regards to the landscaping, that discussion? The discussion is with Prime Gas for the entrance to their gas station. He has some questions on it, so. But otherwise, we've talked to all the other businesses, and, you know, we've been through this a few times, so they're all aware of it. They're all happy with the design.
Should we ask our state delegation for some support on this?
We've already had it.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
To Jane. When, when does this all come due? When, when would notification?
The application is due August 29th, and they're usually fairly quick with the response. I'd say maybe two months. I haven't heard anything definite on when they'll, when they'll come back with it, but I'm believing in about two months.
All right, so hopefully before the end of the year.
Hopefully, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Jane, anything else we can do to help this, or just, all right? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. I would entertain a motion to authorize the chairman to sign an FY14, FY15 GATRA contract with the COA.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, the last time this contract came up, there were a few things about it that council and I didn't like, so we spent about over a year working with the GATRA folks to take out some of the more objectional language. There's always something in the air that references federal regulations that we can't, you know, we can never get out of there because it's a federal requirement. It's like the state standard contracts. You agree to live with certain language because you know you just can't change it. But the things that they could control and they could change, they did, and now council is satisfied, I'm satisfied, that this contract is in a form that we can sign. So, so we're asking you to sign last year's and this year's because they're the same document essentially, and this way they can have signed copies from both years on file.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Is this the same contract that we've been having with the COA, or does this include the expansion for the shuttle for downtown that?
No, this is, this is the same one. This is the ongoing transportation contract that we have with them. You know, they provide the vehicles, we provide the staff, we operate, they maintain, that kind of thing.
Any other comments, questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. McKinnon?
Did we reopen announcements? I believe there was an announcement about MCAM.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Yes. There's a rather kind of a comprehensive list of things that are changing, or maybe not changing, I don't know. May I?
All right. We're going to go back to announcements for a moment. The MCAM, the Middleborough Community Cable Access, is reassigning the PEG, which is the Public Education and Government Channels. Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon Channel 34 will be the Middleborough Government Channel. Comcast Channel 20 and Verizon Channel 33 will continue to be the Middleborough Education Channel. Comcast Channel 95 and Verizon Channel 35 will now be the Middleborough Public Access Channel. MCAM is following the intent of the PEG access where P is public, E is education, and G is government, and they've notified the school department of the change, and they will continue to have their education access channel. But due to the large volume of government and access programming, they need to have dedicated channels for government as well as public access program. The week of August 11th, they will be adding a web viewing on-demand feature to the program schedule through the MCAM website, www.mccam02346.com, and they have decided to do the channel reassignment and web viewing configuration upgrade at the same time. In addition, the Permanent Cable Committee has hired Zachary Grundy as a contractor for 18 hours a week for six months to assist Ms. Foy to put all this together and evaluate the position at the end of, and they will evaluate the position at the end of the six month period. Please like MCAM on Facebook and receive updates, updates of the progress of these projects as well as the programming and other information from MCAM. And that's it. So thanks for catching that, Mr. McKinnon. Hearings, meetings, and licenses. 7:00 p.m. A little behind schedule. We're going to discuss the search for the town manager with the members of the former town manager's search committee. Good evening, gentlemen. Come on up.
Hey.
How you doing? Any questions? Yes, how do you hire a town manager as good as Charlie got?
Well, you started right by hiring an outside firm. That's what we did last time. I've been on three of them. First one, we did it everything ourselves. That was with Jack Healy, probably 70 applications back then, but we didn't even hire an outside firm, I don't believe. We just went through them all, narrowed it down. And I like the way we've done it the last couple of times with the police chiefs, where you get the MMA or any outside consultant. In fact, we interviewed the consultants last time and picked, I think, the MMA, and then they go through them, do the background checks, get it down to a reasonable, you know, serious candidates, because you get people to just throw it, see if it sticks against the wall. You know, and you can easily go through those, but he does it for you, or the group does it for you, and then just bring them in. It's not rocket science. Sit down and take the command from the board of selectmen. Do you want three? Do you want five? Do you want just the best? Do you want the top seven? Whatever you want. And go through them. Everybody looks at them, comes back in with their picks. I think these are the ones we should interview, and several of, everybody will be in agreement on several of them. Some you won't. You'll have the discussions, and then you bring those candidates in and interview them, and take it from there. If you get clearly three, and that's it, send them the three up. If you get five, send them up. If you, if your commander's to have five, but you have six or seven, you know, you have two extra that are just, you know, they're tied, then you just go back to the board of selectmen and say, hey, I know you said five, you said three, but we have two extra that we think are just tremendous, and we want you to take a look at them. Then it's up to you to make that decision whether you want those extra, or if you don't even meet the five, there's only three clearly good candidates. So that's it. Send it back to you, and then you do your interviews. And sometimes the board isn't happy, and they send it back to the screening committee, and then you start all over again. And sometimes you get some of the same people back, even if it's two months later, some have dropped out, taken jobs elsewhere, and you get some new candidates. The pool isn't as large as it was 20 years ago. You know, I think, I don't know if it's down to 30 or, you know, I don't even think you get 40 anymore, but serious candidates. So it can move quickly. It's fairly easy. You just listen to people and use your experience, and depends what you want in a town manager. You know, most of the time you want someone strong in finances. That seems to be the trend these days. But sometimes it's something else going on in the town at that point. Last time, the casino was the big question, and, you know, so that was, a lot of the questions were geared towards, one, finances, but two, the casino, because that was the burning issue. So sometimes a town has some burning issue that they want the new town manager to be well-versed in, and so that becomes the focal point. But it worked very well. We had, you know, these members here, a few other people, representatives from the school committee, the board of selectmen, at-large members, some ex-selectmen on there. Everyone came up with their questions, and we used the same questions on every candidate. The same people asked those questions. We went through those questions first, of course, to make sure they were good, and we did tape it. We taped the police, when I was on the police chief's search committee, not a screening search committee, we taped every candidate. I'm not sure why we did that, but we did it. I don't know if that was a suggestion legally, but the screening ones, we asked, we keep the exact same for every candidate. And that's it. And then we sit, meet, and discussed it, and then sent the results up to the board of selectmen. It's pretty easy.
How large was the committee?
Nine.
Was it nine?
Yeah. I was going to say seven, but nine, yeah.
And one member of the school, school committee?
Superintendent.
Superintendent was on it. Someone from the selectmen, and we had.
Wayne was on it, and I think I was, but then I, my chairman did.
Yep. So we had four ex-selectmen. Bruce Atwood, myself, Link, Neil, and Anna was on it from the town, Anna of, yeah, she was on it. Bob Solomon, yeah. We don't think Pat was on.
No.
I don't think Pat was on. I don't remember him at any meetings, no. And Joe Freitas was on it, yeah. He was probably on the ZBA at that point. And, you know, we held as many meetings as we had. We met at the library, at least for the interviews. We did that. It's a nice setting, looks professional, in the boardroom, in the boardroom, and spaced them out every hour. I remember being there. We had some in the morning, broke for lunch, and then went back and did them up. So I don't know if we did five, I can't remember how many interviews, five, at least five.
Four.
Four, five, yeah. Yeah, it worked good. We had a good group, you know, when we were together, and we got a good, we got a good pick, so it worked out well. Yeah.
All right. Remember, the board have any questions, comments?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. McKinnon?
How many letters of interest do we have to be on this committee?
I would say about nine.
You two gentlemen, you three gentlemen interested in being on this?
I put my name in, yes.
Do you remember how to write your name?
When is the departure date?
When we let him go.
Okay.
We, we own his car, so.
End of October, tentatively.
Have you hired the firm yet to?
Yeah.
We're talking with MMA, right?
No, they've already started. Yeah, we made an interview with them, and they're recruiting, they've.
Run the ad?
Ads out. Deadline September 12th.
Oh, great. On the ball.
Did the MMA?
Yeah, the important thing is to facilitate the process, because candidates tend to drop out or take other jobs, and so what you, what we ultimately want to do is make sure the selectmen have a choice of the top candidates, and that can be a little bit tricky. The last time around, we had one drop out at the last minute, and so the more it drags out, the more problematic it tends to be. So it needs to be crisp and accomplish the purpose as quick as possible. Really, the selectmen could do it themselves if they chose to, but sometimes having two pairs of eyes, so that you guys get a fresh look at the finalists, you know, and you do that in an open session. So whereas, I believe we can screen the initial candidates in closed session, executive session, so that no one knows that they're applying. So that's basically one of the rationales for having a search committee, if you will, or whatever you want to call it. But I do agree that, I think it's Mark Morris. He did a very good job in, you know, giving us a heads up on basically who he thought the head candidates were, and tips on what the salaries offer should be, and all that type of thing.
Dino and Mark Morris, he kept our expectations and reality in sync. I think we have a very tight timeframe that we have to work with, and to say what Neil, to go on with what Neil was going to say, privacy is absolutely key if we want to get quality candidates, in my, in my opinion, because, you know, somebody's going to be leaving a good position, they don't necessarily want everybody to know that they're going to be, you know, applying, and, and for me, it was one of the most gratifying committees I've ever been on, because we, we all got to decisions, but we all had diverse opinions on it, and, and the whole process really worked, and, you know, through the discussions like Steve was talking about, and to the, to the three candidates. And the one person that Neil said that dropped out, you know, turned out to be a good thing, and it was, it was very positive for the town that he did, so. It works, but you guys get, get started.
Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Chair has, to the, I guess to you and to the rest of the board, has anybody else received phone calls from Mr. Morris? I knew he called me, so he's been in touch with all of us? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the plan had been to have him come to one of your meetings this week just to be able to talk to you about what you're looking for. His schedule didn't allow that, so what we agreed on instead is he would call each of you and talk to you individually, and, you know, find out what you're, you're looking for, and this way it would substitute for that ability, or his inability to come to a meeting.
Well, I think that in conjunction with establishing the committee, we have to let the committee know, we'll have to discuss amongst ourselves, to let the committee know what we're looking for too. And not that they wouldn't, because being former selectmen, they all, they all know, you know, what we really need, but also we want to reaffirm what we really want for, to replace Charlie. So we've got to sit and chat about that and then get that message through.
And I think that goes exactly in hand with what Steve was talking about, the trends and what's needed, and I think it would be incumbent upon the committee and the selectmen to work with Charlie, because I'm sure there's a lot of little things that he does in the course of, you know, his job that just miraculously happened that, you know, we should, we may and may not want to know about, which we probably do.
Would we like to set a date to, to pick a search committee?
I think we should.
Yeah, that's it.
The thought is if you can pick it on the 25th, you could meet with them on the 8th and have that discussion with them about what you're looking for.
You guys okay with that?
Sure.
Yeah.
All right.
And maybe you have some discussion on the 25th amongst yourselves.
Right.
About what it is you're looking for, so you can talk to the committee on the 8th.
Sounds like a plan.
That's good.
All right. All right, thank you very much, Selma. Appreciate it. We'll be talking with you shortly.
Oh, that looks good.
Yeah, really.
Way to go, Mike. Thank you. Yeah, we're going to go.
ALS money. Okay, I'm just going to say it out there now, so it doesn't look bad.
That was.
Dumping of the water money.
That was so we don't pick them for the search committee?
Yeah.
All right, 7:30. You on time?
No.
All right, on time. By my clock on my iPad.
Yeah, me too, on the iPad, yeah.
7:30, WRPD hearing for the TIP project on Route 44.
Good evening. I'm Kurt Young. I work for Wetlands Preservation Incorporated.
Do I have to open the hearing?
Yep.
Where's the announcement? Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing in the selectmen's meeting room at the Town Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing in the Selectmen's Meeting Room at the Town Hall at 10 Nickerson Avenue, Middleborough, Mass. on Monday, August 11, 2014, 7:30 PM for the purpose of discussing an application filed by Wetlands Preservation Incorporated on behalf of David Sweetster, High Rock Harding Road, LLC, 275 Grove Street, Suite 2 to 400, Newton, Mass., 024466 for the Gateway Commons Project in Lakeville, for a special permit under the Water Resource Protection District bylaw to allow for transportation improvements to the Harding Street, Route 44, including road widening, resurfacing culvert, reconstruction, drainage, utility improvements, construction of a wetlands replication area in Lakeville, and other ancillary work. Zoning District Development Opportunities, District WRPD, District Z4. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter shall appear at the time and place designated. With that, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. I'm Kurt Young from Wetlands Preservation Incorporated. We filed the application with you for this highway or transportation improvement project. The project itself is actually associated with a commercial development called Gateway Commons, which is located in Lakeville. You may all know that Pequot Brook runs right through this portion of the two towns, half in Middleborough, half in Lakeville. Gateway Commons, the project itself, is located entirely within Lakeville. However, associated with that, we have transportation improvement requirements, like signaling signs, road widening, and a coastal replacement of Pequot Brook, and a very forceful repair, and half of that work is in Middleborough, and half is in Lakeville. Similarly, we have been requested to do some resurfacing work in this portion of the 495 intersection, and we'll give you a quick rundown on that in a moment. The site has, in Middleborough, the project includes the middle of Pequot Brook, approximately 800 feet along Route 44, much of which has wetlands along the edge of it, and some work associated with 495 intersection, and then a small portion of wetlands associated with that stretch as well. The Forest Protection District does move to develop a new improvement program in regard to trying to deal with 25-foot setbacks because we're springing on the fact that the highway itself is built full of that. So, sorry to tell us so. We have, associated with Gateway Commons, some wetland impacts that we replicate those wetlands on the site in Lakeville. We have impacts to wetlands along Harding Street in this portion of the site, and some in this portion of the site in Lakeville. And the applicant, the owner, has a small piece of land right here that we can replicate , so all of the applications will be done in Lakeville, and we're very close proximity to location. We received a comment letter from the peer reviewer. We can go through that in a minute, but I thought it would be appropriate to have Mike Myers of TEC run through the highway improvement tasks and efforts, so you have a pretty summary of what's actually involved in that, and if you have any comment on that question.
Can I just ask you a couple of quick questions?
Sure.
That's the old Lakeville nurseries?
Yes, it is.
And basically, it's across the street from the old?
That's all Harding, where it's ranked, they have, is the Lakeville Nursery, Harding. We've heard of both ways.
The old nursery?
Okay.
And that's across the street from the old movie theater?
Yes.
The old drive-in theater?
You can still see the movie theater outline right here, just the way the man is on. Yeah, basically immediately across.
All right.
Good evening. As Kurt mentioned, my name is Mike Myers from TEC, and other design consultants have developed transportation improvements associated with the Gateway Commons site development. The project does have two locations within the middle row, one over the F-495 ramps, and then the section end up in the site driveway, where the majority of the work will take place. This graphic here shows the work over at the F-495 ramps, that the ramps located right here, Route 44 running east-west. The improvements here are very minor in nature. All we're looking to do here is complement a left turn lane, so you can take care of the additional trips from the site. In order to do that, we have to modify the pavement markings that are out down Route 44. It's a state requirement to modify the pavement markings to resurface the water. So what we'd be proposing is from the limit to the bridge over 495, to 800 to 1,000 feet, just a 3/8 inch culvert resurfacing, basically eliminates the pavement markings that obviously are closing. So there won't be any construction, any excavation, or anything like that over in this area, strictly resurfacing. Majority of the work, as I mentioned, is over at the proposed site driveway, which is located just west of Pequot Brook, within Lakeville. With a new site like this, you're going to generate new trips to the site, so we're proposing a brand-new traffic signal at the proposed site driveway. So with that, you have a widened roadway from two mains to four. We've worked with the state on this to basically provide the narrow section we possibly can, because you've got wetlands up and down the corridor. The state has a new policy in place, it's called a helping transportation policy, trying to promote more pedestrian and bicycle use. However, sidewalks in this area, not likely to get utilized that much. It would be a detriment to the water, because of that excessive widening to the wetland resources. So we're collaborating with DOT to get that narrow section we possibly propose through here. Today, basically, when you have rainfall events and water hits the roadway, it discharges directly, you know, the wetlands to the paved roads and other things. So you don't get any treatment of solids that are in the road, there are some degrees of salts. So what we're proposing to do is remove all of those, propose new catch basins, and a stormwater treatment system in the driveway, hopefully in Lakeville. But with those catch basins and the system, we're going to be able to remove about 50% of the solids. It's going to be a great improvement from what exists today, which is essentially so you get that direct discharge and. As Kurt mentioned, we will have to replace the culvert, the widened roadway. The good news is that culvert's new, 100 years old. It's in very poor condition. It's something that needs to be replaced and things like that. So it's a great opportunity to fix that. That's really just a pretty cool review. Do you have any specific questions?
I also would add a couple of things from a permitting perspective. We have our order of conditions for the Lakeville site itself. We have the Lakeville Conservation Approval for the highway work in Lakeville, and we have the order of conditions from your Conservation Commission as well. We're working on a conservation management permit for the rare species issues on the main site, not associated with the transportation component, just the main site itself. And that's in process. We expect that to come about in about two months, would be my best guess. And aside from that, from my perspective, that's really all the other wetland permits that we need to move forward. We're in good shape. So, any questions? We'd be happy to.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. McKinnon.
Our engineer had five items. Did they all get addressed?
They did. Let me, well, I can address those. How about if that would be a good way to proceed. Item number one, in the Atlantic Design Engineer's letter, speaks to the issue of whether it's a limited project under the Wetlands Protection Regulations, and it's not. We concur with that. It was filed as a normal wetland fuel project. So we agree with him on that. Number two, catch basins should be equipped with traps and hooded outlets or some other form of water quality measure. I misspoke to Charlie earlier today when I said we had deep-sump hooded catch basins. We have deep-sump catch basins, but the Mass DOT required that we eliminate the hoods because they're a maintenance problem for their people. The way we resolved a lot of that was we have a storm scepter system on the site, a portion of the site that comes into the project site. That storm scepter has a, storm scepter, pardon me, has a oil and grease trap associated with it. So I think we can take care of that issue pretty well. Number three, talks about erosion control being recommended for utility pool and guy wire located in the wetland area. We're not sure we're going to have any soil disturbance associated with that pool or the guy wire. If we do, we'll be glad to put a, you know, erosion control in. It'll expand the erosion control beyond where we have it today.
What's BVW impact mean?
That's bordering vegetated wetland. It's a type of wetland resource area. It's the one that's most frequently quoted, shall we say, in the regulations, and the one that people agonize over a bit because there's a 5,000-square-foot threshold associated with impacts to it. So it's a, you have a limited amount of area that you can impact. Number four is there downstream protection proposed for work to be conducted in Pequot Brook, floating booms, debris barriers, et cetera. Both the, both commissions, their peer reviewer from BSC and us really don't think there's going to be an issue with that. We're putting sheet piling down the stream channel sides, so we can find the work to the area outside of that. So we have very limited work in the, in the stream itself. So we don't see a need for that. In fact, it can become a problem of causing blockages and barriers. So we'll be, if you want to put a condition in that we recover any lost material, more than happy to do a cleanup as that work progresses. But I think that's obvious that we would be doing that anyways. But the fifth item is, de-watering plans and details have not been provided. We don't really have any de-watering expected to be required, so we didn't put anything in the application. But certainly, if there was de-watering required, we use a de-water filter on the side of the road or into the project itself to do that de-watering. I don't have any problem with the comments really, from that standpoint.
Well, I guess I have a question. We do have a couple of minutes, so. We've got, where our engineer calls for a specific type of catch basin design, but Mass DOT, who has just been sued by, was it Environmental Conservancy or Nature Conservancy or some, one of the naturalist organizations has sued, and Mass DOT now has to replace catch basins that are out there on the highways.
Yeah.
Some, not all of them, but some of them. So why would our engineer come up with something different that Mass DOT couldn't use or could use?
I think you'll see in the, in the motion that we wrote it such that it's more flexible for them to deal with that comment in more than one way.
I'm just concerned that this sounds like a pretty straightforward. You're replacing a culvert that's, somebody's going to have to replace it.
Yeah.
You're replacing a culvert.
This is a very advantageous opportunity.
Right. I mean, this is, this is like a kind of a winning situation here, and it'll be inconvenient for people driving over the road for a few days when, you know, when the construction's going on. But, but you're going to replace something with something that's much, you know, that's deteriorated. You're going to be replacing it with something much better. And yet, it seems like our engineer is maybe not on the same plane as, as the Mass DOT, which has certain requirements. I kind of think we'd like to get a message to our engineer to, this is something that's, it's just going to tie things up a little bit.
It would be difficult for a person, no matter how good this review engineer is, we don't know this fellow, but I think it would be a real challenge to identify the fact that while we don't have those hoods in the, in the, in all the catch basins, because DOT said we can't, we did forestall that issue as being a real problem by being able to capture the material in the storm scepter system on a site that we actually have maintenance control of. So that's, that's the advantage of what we've got going for. So where we could do that, we did it.
Anybody else have any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, Tricia's not here, but we do have someone from the Conservation Commission here. So the Lakeville Conservation Commission is, you're working closely with them?
Sure.
And they're going to be coming down for site visits. How closely are we coordinating with them so we don't duplicate work? I'm just asking.
I know Tricia had spoken with the Conservation Division in Lakeville. We also, I don't recall the conditions that we put on this project, but we did put some special conditions on there. And there are some site visits set up throughout the project.
From our end as well?
From our end as well.
And I would add that the peer reviewer for both towns was the same.
Okay.
When you talk about efficiency, we thought that was an efficient way to do it.
Good, yes, absolutely. That's what I'm getting to, yep.
And I think it worked out advantageously.
Any other comments or questions? I have a couple of quick ones. The work you're going to do on the overpass of 495, the 3/8 overlay, for lack of a better term, it's not going to hold up our road or traffic, is it? Well, I mean, strange things have happened. Well, we have, I don't want Mass DOT to come in and say, well, you guys just fixed that overpass. We're not going to touch this for seven years.
Well, this project because we're in state highway, because we're full Mass DOT process, so we won't come down very step away.
All right, beautiful. And you're going above and beyond to protect the cold water fisheries in Pequot Brook?
Yes, we, both Leonard Washborne Brook and Pequot Brook are cold water fishery resources. We've worked with the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife and Natural Heritage to work with our stormwater management system on the site with a design that is subsurface in terms of storage of water, so that it doesn't get adversely affected by the heat of the sun or the cold of the air. It's moderated by the temperature of the earth. We've got about 54-degree earth down there at the bottom of the system, so it helps moderate those temperatures, both during the extreme periods of cold and warmth that occurs, and particularly like a runoff from some of those thunder showers we had in the last couple of weeks. Okay, that's off a hot surface, hits a cold stream, causes a problem with the cold water fisheries from time to time. And we've worked with them to work out a system that I think really resolves that problem very well. They're very happy with the system, quite frankly. They haven't seen the cooperation that we gave them on any other project from the standpoint of attenuating those impacts.
Anybody else have any other comments or questions? If you need any help with the nuisance whitetail deer running around?
Do you have to take care of some of them?
Don't tell me.
All right. If you want to. I would entertain a motion.
You have to close the hearing.
Ah, close the hearing, sorry. Any other comments or questions from anyone? I'll close the hearing. Now I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that the board finds that the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the WRPD bylaw, and will promote the purposes of the Water Resource Protection Districts, is appropriate to natural topography, soils, and other characteristics of the site to be developed, will not during construction or thereafter have an adverse environmental impact on the aquifer, recharge areas, water resources of the town, will not adversely affect any existing or potential water supply. The board votes to grant a special permit to allow for transportation improvements to Harding Street, Route 44, including road widening and resurfacing, culvert reconstruction, drainage and utility improvements, and other ancillary work as requested in the applicant's application under the Water Resource Protection District bylaw pursuant to Section 8.2.9 WRPD, Zone 4, Use Regulations 3A, enlargement and alteration of existing uses and structures based on the plans titled Harding Street, Route 44, in the town of Lakeville, towns of Lakeville and Middleborough, Plymouth County, by TEC Inc., dated January 22, 2014. The board grants the special permit with the following conditions. The catch basins must be equipped with traps, well, we just went over that, so that's not in there.
Read the whole thing.
Traps, hooded outlets, or similar gas, oil, grit separating measure.
Okay.
Additional erosion control must be added if work on utility pole and guy wire extends beyond planned erosion control measures. Downstream protection must be provided for the work to be conducted in Pocoy Brook. Should de-watering be necessary, the appropriate filtering technology must be employed. If during the review and approval process, the MDOT requires changes that affect the water resources of the town, revised plans shall be submitted to the board for review and approval. Should the revisions not be accepted by the board, the special permit shall not be effective.
Second.
The floating booms is the only thing that we didn't have in our application.
So you proposed collecting whatever debris might?
Yes. Yeah, I'd rather do that, quite frankly, because we have to go back and address that issue with Conservation Commission.
All right, so what would be, what would be language that you could be comfortable with?
I think take appropriate measures to minimize loss of material during construction downstream and to collect, sorry, I rattled off, and collect any lost material so that it doesn't cause an environmental impact.
And that would substitute for the booms and the, I don't have my copy in front of me.
Traps, hooded outlets.
No.
No? Okay.
No, number four.
No, number three. So instead of downstream protection.
Must be provided for work to be conducted in Pocoy Brook. That's all it says.
Doesn't say anything about booms.
It doesn't say anything about booms, and I didn't, when I read it.
Yeah, and what he would be more comfortable with is that you would.
We would control and minimize loss of construction debris during the active construction period and collect any lost material.
As you said, I can't write that fast.
I was just going to, I was just hoping.
I'm trying to write it that fast. Say it first, I'll say it right after you. In place of downstream production must be provided.
In place of sea.
In place of sea downstream production must, protection must be provided for the work to be conducted in Pocoy Brook.
But any.
And any loss of material.
Any loss of material.
Be minimized during.
Into Pocoy Brook.
And any loss of material will be minimized in Pocoy Brook.
Do you have some feedback?
Control and minimize construction debris.
Lost downstream, and that lost material would be collected prior to the completion of construction.
So that's sufficient, that she's writing, okay.
To prevent any environmental impact.
We want to amend this to include that phraseology?
Maybe we can amend it, Charlie.
That would be fine, I can do that.
Make a...
As amended.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to amend item C to be defined as the gentleman just spoke.
And I'll, I'll interface with that.
Second.
You have a motion and a second on an amendment? Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the amendment passes. Now, I have a motion and a second on the original motion. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass his man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Charlie, you wanna do your Tom Manches report real quick?
Real slow?
I have 7:56.
Although the next one, I believe, well, no, I think we probably have to wait till eight o'clock for that. Just a couple of items we already talked about. The fire chief receiving another grant of approximately $10,000. Also, in case you haven't met her, Susan Musto has taken, taken over the position in the IT department, started in July, and she's been a great addition to the department, and we're happy to have her. The, and another item about the Myer Awards, where, you know, we've received for the 2000, you know, this current fiscal year, FY15, we're gonna get $27,391 back toward our property casualty insurance premium. You know, based on the work everybody, department head, staff, Dunn, my assistant Caroline McCroy was coordinating that. And I think over the last three years, we've received over $100,000 in credits from the Myer Awards. So it's been, it's a lot of work, but it's, it's worthwhile. It's, it's, you know, a good amount of money they allow us to save by, you know, taking certain actions that in the long run will eliminate or reduce losses to them. So, it's a, you know, it's one of the best incentive programs I've ever encountered from an insurance company.
Bureau?
That's all I have.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. McKinnon?
Relative to IT. I, when I went to open Jackie's email this weekend for the packet, there was nothing attached. And I thought that was a subtle hint that I should just stay home tonight, but I didn't take it. However, did anybody else have any?
Mr. McKinnon, I also have been having some email problems with attachments. I was able to open up the meeting material for tonight's meeting originally, but since then, it just says error, and I'm not able to see any of the documents. I can in my other emails. And I was able to access it through my iPad, but on my computer, I was not able to, so.
I'm just wondering, because it was so massive, there's so much information, since no one else seemed to have a problem. I'm wondering if it might have been your home computer? Just because sometimes when there's a large amount.
Well, I have an Apple and, and I have, I use a Mac and a PC, and neither one of them, there's nothing there.
Well, Steve, just don't take it personally, you know, it's not like...
It all goes on one email.
I didn't, just don't take hints, that's my problem, you know, I didn't stay home.
No, I don't know what else we can do. But, yeah. We don't even send you the stuff and you still show up.
Steve, I'm kinda thinking it's, I think it's our computers, because when I switched to a different browser, I was able to access one time and then it shut down.
Okay, I think it's a plot. I don't think it's our computers, I think it's a plot.
I think John...
You should sign up for the Smart 911 too, immediately.
I think John said an important word, which is browser. Some, you know, sometimes it's the browser that, that creates difficulty in open cer, opening certain documents.
You're just trying to get out of this, aren't you? You just don't even wanna talk about this with anybody.
I'm just killing time, like we all are. That's all I'm doing. But we, we will certainly ask Tara to look into it.
We gotta talk to these people? Oh, my God.
No, we'll, we'll have Tara look into it and see, maybe see if she can get the bottom one. You know, it may be, if you try a different browser, I, I know, you know, when I try to get on a certain website, I can't use Safari, because they, for whatever reason, they don't support Safari. So I have to switch to Firefox in order to go to that one website.
See, and I use Firefox, and sometimes I had to switch, I didn't even think of switching to Internet Explorer.
Yeah.
So...
But you got it when I sent it to you.
Yeah, you sent it to me and I got it, because you're the chairman, and why would it do anything you wouldn't, didn't want it to do, you know? So, you, I get all of your stuff, including the one that you sent to Google something?
You weren't supposed to get those pictures.
Yeah, well, I did. And they're going on the web tonight.
Oh, boy.
So, no, you, you sent something to Google...
OneDrive?
Yeah, OneDrive. I had to sign up for that and...
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause like Jackie was saying, it was a pretty large attachment. I couldn't send it through my regular email.
But I got the, so you said three things. I got the first one. The second one, nothing came through. The third one, I had to sign up for Google One, and I didn't get anything on that either.
Really?
But I was happy with the first one. I got everything and read it, so.
And you're here.
And I'm here.
Despite our best efforts, you're here.
Despite your best efforts, you didn't want.
All right, so, just so I understand, you, it didn't open from Jackie, but Alan sent it to you and it opened?
Right, right. So I think it's a plot between these three and Jackie.
I don't think so.
File in a grievance.
All right, so, we'll go on to correspondence.
Why, it's 8:04.
I have 7:51.
You know what, you guys are looking at.
My iPad says 8:02.
This iPad says 8:04.
My phone says 7:50. That clock says...
Don't believe that, it's old as I am. Maybe old.
I think we're at 7:50, actually.
All right, so correspondence. Mr. McKinnon, did you get this?
Did you get this? There was Conservation Commission, Lake Shore Drive complaint. This, this, for some reason, they, I, I keep seeing this kind of complaint. I don't think this is so much of a big issue as, as it is a feud. And I don't know if there's any way we can really resolve a feud. That was item number three.
Well, I'm not, my opinion is, if someone is dumping their stuff into the pond, then that's not supposed to happen. If somebody's making that complaint up, that's a, a different issue. But the Conservation Commission, I think, is...
We'll check it out.
Yeah, is well within their rights to look into something like that, because that's not something you should be doing.
When the Conservation Commission, Mr. Chairman, gets a complaint, we don't send out, you know, our agent with a letter with a fine or anything attached.
Right.
You know, we, we look, or the agent goes out and looks to see what she can see from, you know, going on the property or gets permission from the owner to go on the property, and, you know, she sends us a letter similar to this if she finds it necessary.
Right.
We do sometimes have residents that come in and, to the meetings, and make complaints about their neighbors sometimes. So we try to help address those issues as best as we can from the conservation side of it.
The item number 14, potholes on Plymouth Street. Did you send that over to...
Well, not only that, because there was an allegation of some injury, we also sent it to the insurance company. I took a ride up there just to see what they were referring to, and, you know, you know, there is some degradation of the pavement right in the gutter line, and I can imagine a bicyclist might, you know, lose control of a bike. But as we know, the DPW is out every day filling potholes, and there wasn't anything extraordinary about Plymouth Street. It certainly isn't Presing Street or, you know, any of the other roads that are in really serious deterioration. So, you know, it's regrettable that somebody had an accident, but it wasn't, I, I don't think any negligence on our part or any lack of attention on our part.
Okay. The MBTA Advisory Board sent a newsletter item out, which I'm sure everybody was thrilled to read. Seems like quite a bit of our tax money goes to the MBTA, and all they want is only more. So... I, I wish we had all of the gas tax money going back to the roads the way it's supposed to, as opposed to the MBTA. That's not the way it is. Maybe we could send a letter to our delegations just to let them know that we don't really wanna see any more of our gas tax money go to, it's the MBTA. But the governor sets that, so it is what it is. That's all for me.
Ms. Dalton?
Number seven, the Cranberry County Chamber of, Cranberry Country Chamber of Commerce is holding a free seminar, and I'm blurred here. Sales Concept Every Business Owner, Entrepreneur and Sales Professional Should Know, Wednesday, August 20th, 8:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. at Massa Soyet Community College, 49 Union Street, Middleborough. And it is being presented by Lighthouse Strategic Partners, leadership training and coaching firm. So it's some free information for businesses looking for it out there. And number eight, we did receive a request from a resident, actually, asking for an explanation and a request for when warrants are put on the, at the town meeting, why several purchases are clumped together. Is there a reason we do that? And he's wondering if it might be easier for people to respond to them if they aren't clumped together.
Yeah, I read that again, and the characterization that we combine DPW and school and other types of projects in, in an article is just not accurate. I think if Mr. Kavanaugh goes back to his warrants, he'll find that we do exactly what he suggests. We group articles, we group purchases within departments. So we typically have a police article, a fire article, a DPW article, a general government article, which is, say, COA, town hall, library. And we have, when we have school articles, we have them by school. So we'll have a elementary complex article, we have a high school article, a middle school article. And, and we keep technologies separate. So, we, we certainly don't have an article for every single purchase, but we certainly do group them in the, in the very way that Mr. Kavanaugh suggested in his letter. So he, he might have just formed the wrong, wrong impression from, from memory that, that we were doing what he suggests, which we are not doing. We're not bundling all the articles into one or very disparate articles into one. We're, you know, actually doing just what he suggests we do.
By department?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. That's all I have.
All right, Ms. Stewart?
Yes, our conservation agent on behalf of the Conservation Commission sent thank you letters to Senator Pacico and representatives Calder, Gifford and Oral regarding the environmental bond bill, and that was H4009 and Act Providing for the Preservation and Improvement of Land Parks and Clean Energy in the Commonwealth. And our conservation agent highlighted some specific things that were very beneficial about the bill, Middleborough, including $750,000 for the Assawomson Pond Complex, the Maske and Taunton River Flood Management Study, $75,000 to repair the Tuscaloosa Pond Boat Ramp, $57 million to assist homeowners in complying with the revised State Environmental Code for Subservice Disposal of Sanitary Waste, which is Title V, $35 million for dam repair or removal, not specific to some dams that need to be repaired at Pratt Farm, and some town-owned land off Porter and Puntin Streets, $7.2 million to be expended for the rehabilitation and improvements to the Mill Pond Dam in the town of Wareham. Providing further, that $1 million be expended for repairs to the dam at Route 25 in Wareham, $30 million for the park grant program, $8 million for the conservation partnership grant, $35 million for the landscape partnership grant, $8 million for the land grant program, $30 million for the APR program, $2 million for the agricultural environmental enhancement program and the abatement of all forms of pollution generated from agricultural activities, $30 million for the agricultural education at Bristol Agricultural High School in Dayton and others like UMass Amherst, $5 million for upgrades, UMass Cranberry Research Station in East Wareham, $3 million for the 21E Site Assessment Program funding, which protects our groundwater and other resources. $50 million is for the Department of Fish and Game to establish a program for the restoration and habitat protection of cranberry bogs and associated wetland systems, and $50 million promoting agricultural, economic and environmental sustainability. So that was quite a lot that they were able to get done with the bond bill. That will be really helpful to our town.
Certainly will. Anything else? Mr. Nolte?
No, I'm all set.
Um, I did have one, number 10. I'd like to see Mass DOT do an underwater bridge inspection of their own bridge on 495, going over the Maske River. I think they'd be very interested to see what's going on there. And number 15, from Jack, regarding Sports Limited Auto Sales. I meant to get there today, but what's, what is our recourse if the gentleman doesn't reduce his number of cars down to 25 as specified in our permit?
No, I, I think if, if he doesn't do that, I think you, you know, certainly can take some action against him. I don't know exactly if you do it before renewal or after renewal, but, you know, he's got a, he's got a permit for X number. That's, that's all he can have. And, you know, this isn't the first time this has come up.
I don't like being ignored as a board of selectmen. I don't like business practices that we're hearing about. I don't like the defiance of, of the rules, and I'm getting a little angry about it. So, I don't know how anyone else feels.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Through you to Charlie, didn't we have an issue with just the same person we had an issue with in the beginning of the year where we had Bob Whalen going up and checking?
And is this where we had to move cars off-site?
He had a bunch of cars parked someplace else that they weren't supposed to be at. And it took him, I believe, some time to get them moved. I think it took multiple attempts or multiple instruction by Bob for him to move them, and he got called in here for that, and by the time he got here, he had moved them.
Okay, so he's, so then he's...
Sounds to me like he doesn't wanna do business in Middleborough. That's just me.
Through you to Charlie, can you speak to Dan about seeing what our recourse is and how we can eliminate this issue?
Well, one of the things that, you know, we're suggesting is having him come into your next meeting and talk to you. You know, having him explain himself to you, I think, would be...
Enlightening?
A good start. That, you know, we're not just gonna send him a letter and be ignored. Now, have you heard anything from him?
Nothing.
Nothing? So you sent him a letter and you haven't heard anything from him? So, not a good start. Not starting off on the right foot.
Well, I mean, yeah, but we're, we're repeating the same thing over and over again. They have a definition, that's a definition of insanity. You do the same thing over and over again expecting a different result. I think that we need to...
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll, we'll see what else...
I, I wanna know what we can do, put the, I'll put him out of business for, for a month.
He needs to come in and explain himself to you. You know, what's going on here? Why are we continuing to have these extra cars? And why is this the only, of all of our used car establishments, why is this the only one we're continually getting complaints about? Continuing?
Well, I will gladly listen to his excuse, and then I wanna give him a written warning or, well, what in the real world I would call a written warning. Or I wanna give him some type of, I want him to walk out of here next week, whenever he comes in, with punishment. Not just, okay, well, we expect you to do better next time. Because guess what? We had to send the building inspector out there three times this year, earlier this year, and now we're doing the same thing over again. So I want him, he can say whatever he wants, and then he's gonna get slapped. So I need to know what we can slap him with.
We'll look into that.
Thank you. I have no...
Fine idea.
Do you like that, Mr. Flaherty?
I do like that.
You think, you go along with that? I don't like being ignored.
The velvet hammer this week, the slut jammer.
Yeah. Let me try. Uh, anybody have anything else in the correspondence?
I'm not gonna say correspondence to me anymore, are ya?
For clarification, we're gonna have him in. Am I gonna send him along?
Yeah, send him a letter and tell him to be here. I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
That's all right.
Got a little ahead of myself. Got a little ahead of myself.
That's okay. You can do that. All right, 8 o'clock. We're going to have an earth removal modification application hearing with Geelopes Construction and Red Dog Cranberry Company, LLC. Let me find that, and I'll open the hearing. A hearing will be held in the selectmen's meeting room at Town Hall, 10 Nickerson Avenue, Middleborough, Mass. on Monday, August 11th, at 2014 at 8:00 p.m. for the purpose of discussing an application filed by GAF Engineering on behalf of Geelopes and Red Dog Construction Company, LLC, for modification to an earth removal permit for property located off Puntin Street, Middleborough Assessors Map 034, lots 4315 and 4584. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter shall appear at the time and place designated. Hearing is now open.
Thanks very much. I'm Bill Madden from GAF, here on behalf of Geelopes Construction and Red Dog Cranberry. The plan we have before you is a modification plan from the latest permit application, permit that the companies currently have. In 2009, we came before the selectmen, we presented essentially the same plan that was developed back in 1994, which I have a hard time remembering all the details, 20 years ago, but the configuration of what we planned on was a configuration of four cranberry bog sections, a small one, a reservoir, and some upgrading of the Draybridge Lowage Canal that is built to the east of the existing cranberry bog acreage. So, in 2009, we came before the board, we had an expired permit, we received a new removal permit, and as far as we could tell, that permit would be subject to the Permit Extension Act that Governor Patrick implemented, and will really allow us to continue, continue on under that provision to about 2016, I think is what the timelines look like, four years after the expiration date, which was 2000, which would have been 2012. So, this was what was approved. We think it continues on in its current, in its current status as far as the permit goes, but what we did is in 2012, we prepared some correspondence. I sent it off to the town inspector at the time, which was the DPW director, that was Amy Baggers at that time, because the contractor had started to modify the plan a little bit to further enhance water supplies for the down, for the down gradient cranberry bog sections. So, what they did is they were continuing on in that vein and get to the point where we felt that we needed to really come before, get here soon versus later. It already had gone a little late, I think, on our part to get before you folks, but what we wanted to do was modify that existing plan to delete the two cranberry bog sections, which would have been four and five on this plan, and replace it with a, with a reservoir that's currently half-constructed thereabouts. This area here is a portion that's pretty much constructed. There will be a little bit more material that's going to be taken out of that northeast corner, and there's available material on the site to finish off the side slopes per the, per the permit condition plans. So, that was what precipitated us coming, coming back through for modification of the plan that was part of the 2009, 2009 approval. So, there were some questions brought up by conservation. One of Concom's concerns was flagging of the, of the wetlands. I don't necessarily believe that that's needed at this time, because the first phases of the work was the construction of this reservoir down here. There were some BBW associated with cranberry, not cranberry, it's just a typical, well, this is actually a, it's a pretty huge canal, but the BBW, when Rosemary Curry was here, that was one of the areas that we looked at very closely with her. We wanted to conduct some agricultural exempt activities in that area, and we received an order from Concom to do that, and I think it's been extended and perhaps expired at this point, but all of our work now is, is well beyond the hundred-foot buffer zone to that, because we've already constructed these two bog sections, which are in excess of 150 feet thereabouts, and what they vary, this one's now, or it's about 150. The other cranberry bog, the other cranberry bog that we're hoping to build replaces this small triangular-shaped one, and once again, that's right up against the 495 layout. It's all up in the area, and the wetlands are, you know, quite a ways away from it. So, I don't really think that we have any conservation jurisdiction matters to, to deal with on, on the remaining portion of the work. I think we've done a fairly good job controlling erosion and the subsequent sedimentation that would result from that. Where these are all dug out, our water flow, just from the high point to the low point, we have the ability to store pretty much all of our groundwater on the site prior to the discharge and through the flows into the, into the Draybridge Canal. We also received a letter from Director of Public Works, and he's talking about having us update the project plan, and we could, we could do that, your desire to have us. Really, it's just a small amount of excavating and then sloping off those areas, but the timelines may be helpful, perhaps a condition of approval might be the mechanism to have us prepare that plan to, to move it forward. Then the other question was, will there be any additional blasting? There had been blasting conducted in the past, and this northeast corner will require a little bit more in the future. I think that if they follow the same pre-blast survey, pre-blast survey protocol, that we could, we will be able to deal with any of the impacts that could be perceived to exist to any of the buyers, to the buyer's properties. So, I think the pre-blast surveys that have been done in the past worked out fairly well. I'm not aware of any problems with them, and I'm certain if you folks have heard anything different than that. But that's really the purpose that we came forward with, just to get a modification from the original plan to the one that was presented with the most recent application. We also received a letter from Atlantic Design, and they reviewed the project, and it's just my take on it, that they reviewed it as a new job, new project, but, you know, it's really just a point, it's a plain modification from an existing permit that's currently in effect. The things that he has noted in his review letter are generally conditions of, the condition of the permit that's in place now, and we didn't really think that, that a lot of comments were germane given the fact that the permit is, is currently in place. So, that's pretty much what we have on, on the project, and I'm happy to have any questions you may have.
Chairman?
Mr. McKinnon?
I believe, I was sitting on the board when we last discussed this. I know that one thing that comes to mind is the blasting. That was very concerning to a lot of the neighbors in that area. You say you're only going to be doing a little bit of blasting. What do you call a little bit? Can you quantify that somewhat?
I'm really not in a position to quantify the term little. I'm thinking that perhaps in relation to the work that's already been conducted out there on the site, that it looks like we probably have about, you know, 30%, 33% more blasting than what has already taken place, and I don't know how many shots they took down there in that, in that stone, or how many different times they had to blast, so I've, you know, had a little bit of a disadvantage. Is that some information we can provide for you?
I think we should hear more about how much blasting was done before, and so we can have a better idea of what the, what the folks are going to be looking at. I know there's a lot of concern about sonic vibrations and affecting the households and so forth, and you're even closer now to those households than you were before because you've removed some stuff. So, I'm just, I'm just concerned that we're going to have more issues come up with more blasting, and I thought that, and this was a long time ago, I thought that that was the limit of what they were going to do there. Now, you want to go further, and would you, you said 495 down, did you mean 44?
I'm sorry, Route 44, yes, I'm sorry, right here to the, to the stop. And we're, we're still working in the same footprint of the, of the original cranberry bog, so we're not really moving laterally or closer to property, because the point is well-taken. I think that there were some issues with the blasting that occurred perhaps prior to 2009, and as part of that 2009 permit, we, I think, took a couple of extra steps to ensure that the neighbors weren't going to have any, any issues. I can get you that information from them. I'm sure that the, that they have to have the records of the, of the blasting in place, and we can give you that.
And I think all those neighbors have to be warned. I know you've, you turned in the green cards, but I don't know if, did you warn the neighbors that there was going to be more blasting going on, or is it just? See, there's a, it's one thing to talk about why we're going to move X number of hundreds of thousands of yards of gravel and sand, and this is what it's going to be, but when you start talking about blasting, that's a whole nother issue. So, do the folks know that there was going to be blasting going on, or just that you were making modifications?
I didn't, I didn't make any specific reference to the neighbors in the by modifications other than that we have a public hearing.
Okay. And I don't want to stir up a hornet's nest, but I also don't want to have a hornet's nest thrown on my lap, so I think we got to let the folks out there know that if, if you're going to be doing more blasting there, to be aware and...
They will have to notify the buyers, the neighbors, and I believe that the sensors that were placed previously for the last round of blasting would just be replaced in the same location, the same level monitoring would take place, but to be fair, I think that needs to be provided so that everybody's a 100% understanding of what the, what is going on, so I agree with that.
Right.
Mr. Chair, if I may, so the modification, how, also, how would it affect how much material you're taking out of there and truck trips per day, things that would be affecting the neighborhood?
It's not going to, we're not going to increase the number of truck trips per day, the volume of material. We have to retain quite a bit on-site anyway to create these slopes that are shown there, so the rock that's blasted from this excavation is the material that's to be hauled out for sale. I forget what the truck trip was, I think it was 40 or 50, something along those lines, but it's not expected to be, it can't be any more than the maximum number that the permit allows.
But it would be for a longer period?
No, I think that we agreed at the hearing in 2009 that we would even waive the one-year extension period that comes along with that permit, you know, and I think the Permit Extension Act happened, you know, helped us out in that, in that regard, because we are, you know, 2012 should have expired, 2013 would have given us that extra year that we could ask for. We, you know, we waived that right when we were issued that permit, but Permit Extension Act, I think, came in in 2000, August of 2010, so that's where we ended up getting four additional, four additional years. Right now, they haven't been on the site for about, I was called by Goodwill, it's about three months, so there's really been no activity out there, so when they go out to finish this thing, I think that they'll go out, wrap it up, and be done with it. It's their goal to get it done in a year.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Nolte.
This will be more for Charlie. Charlie, would you agree that the Atlantic Design comments are not germane?
Yeah, I think we have to do a better job, you know, and this is very unusual. I think we've only had two permit modifications since I've been here. So, I think, and we met with Rich Tepes and Ciggy today, and I think we have to do a better job of alerting him to, you know, what's a modification as opposed to what's a brand-new permit, because I think, you know, these are issues that were already addressed in the years from here.
All right, thank you.
All right, just along those same lines, so the trips per day, you have a limit with the original permit, and you're not going to exceed that.
Correct.
The dust control, you have a condition on that, you're not going to, nothing is going to change. I think that's what, what we were talking about is, so what may, it's not a new permit, it's an, it's an extension or a modification. So, dust control, operation times are going to stay the same. Erosion control will stay the same, those things. So, we're not modifying any of the conditions of, of work. All right, we're just kind of moving some things around a little bit. I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. McKinnon that any additional blasting is going to occur. We need to be aware of that. The neighbors need to be, the buyers need to be aware of that.
So, what do you want to know from the applicant about blastings, or you want to know how many blasts took place since 2010?
What are, what are we looking at?
And what you, they think will take place to finish it off?
What are they anticipating? Yeah, so we can let the folks know, because the folks are going to want to know. They start hearing, you know...
Do you want to know how many blasts have been blasted, say, um...
Yeah. Approximately how much blast, you know, I think we're so used to Middleborough truck traffic that that doesn't bother us. It's, it's when you're sitting there in the house and the place starts rattling, that does, that's a little disconcerting. So, how many blasts are you going to be taking? I know that you can't come up and say 31, but approximately. So, we can, the folks have to know. They got to know what to expect, and they got to know that there's going to be protocols in place so that we can, again, you were checking houses before and after, so we can make sure that...
Do you have all reports on that, who blasted, and the planes are damaged, or anything of that sort?
Well, I, we haven't seen any complaints, but that doesn't mean something wasn't raised. And maybe nothing was raised, that's fine, but I just want to make sure that the folks know it's going to happen again, it's going to be a limited timeframe, and, you know...
What would the limit time be for, for 2016? Well, I think, I think our DPW director says it best, the applicant should provide the anticipated extent of blasting, and the applicant should notify the Middleborough Police and Fire Department when blasting is planned on-site. If you guys can do that, I think that would satisfy us.
Right. I, I don't think you should be sitting here saying you're going to be blasting from now until 2016. You're not going to hire a contractor, somebody to be on, on, on-site or be prepared to come down there from now until 2016. That's going to take away the financial fund of this project, but you're going to know approximately what you're going to need to do.
I don't know occasions in advance of the blast event, you know, when it takes place. They're going to have, they have to do that, so I think we followed the same protocol that we developed, that was developed in 2009. That should, should work. I think, I think that any problems that might have resulted, I think, were prior to, prior to that, but, you know, let's play, let's play it safe.
We do it the way it's supposed to be, we won't have an issue, you know.
How do you guys feel about the conservation coming down and checking out your wetlands lines?
Well, I think Mr. Madden just has to communicate with Ms. Cassidy and, you know, and show her, she, she was using an aerial, you know, a GIS aerial, and she was questioning, well, is this in our jurisdiction or not? I think he shows clearly on the plans that it's not. I think we ask him to touch base with her and at least communicate back to her that, you know, here's, here's the plan. Clearly, we're not anywhere near your jurisdiction.
Yeah, and we're happy to take the first site, site block also, so she can make those observations herself, so we have no issue with that. I think our plan, plan to do that.
Perfect.
Mr. Chairman, is that wetland line, is that from 2002, when you first came before the commission, or is that from more recently?
That would have been way back when, 2002.
So, I mean, a lot can happen with a wetland line in 2013.
You know, everything was pretty much focusing on that, on that canal. There was a small little water hole down in this, this area here that they take water from the other side of Route 44. They were trying to really relieve the pressure on that source and basically have a closed, closed loop for their cranberry operations on, on-site, and then they'll pump that water back up to that higher reservoir as a form of tailwater as well, so we'll try to keep that in circulation as opposed to just having it exit underneath. It's raving work at this hand, instead of having that... it's raving work at this hand, instead of having that water, um, exit underneath, uh, Flintwood Street.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions, comments, questions? All right.
So, what do you want to do tonight? Do you want them to come back, or do you just want to put some contingencies on your permit, or what, what do you prefer to do?
I think it'd be a good idea if we make sure that they have contingencies to notificat, notif, I, yeah, notify the abutters of the blasting, that they let us know, or let the, uh, police and fire know approximate quantities, um, if you can, of blasting, or timeframes you're going to be doing blasting. You got to follow their protocols anyway. And that we make sure that the protocols that were, that were used in 2009 for the blasting be implemented for this, for the blasting that's going to happen currently. If that's in there, I don't, I wouldn't mind granting the extension, but I want to make sure that we adequately notify the folks and take care of them as best we can.
All right.
Okay, all right, so let me, uh, let me just, uh, read this back. So, the, the permit would be issued contingent upon updates of the project plan, notification to abutters of the blasting, notification to the police and the fire departments of, of the blasting, implementing the protocols of 2009 for any future blasting, um, reporting to the board on the number of prior blasts and the approximate number of future blasts, and, um, inviting the conservation agent to the site to take a site walk to, um, view the wetlands line.
And that all remaining existing earth removal conditions remain in place?
Exactly.
Somebody should say so moved.
So moved.
Jackie, did you get all that, was that, okay?
All right. I have a motion in a second. Are there any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passage to Namsley, thank you very much.
Excuse me, the closing hearing.
Ah, close the hearing.
Oh, there we go.
Motion?
Motion to approve with the conditions?
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passage to Namsley, thank you.
Okay, thanks very much.
We got like two minutes?
My, my, uh, computer says it's 8:41, and Bill Gates would never lie unless someone told him the time.
Which I don't understand, because they're all connected to the same internet.
I know, I know.
Maybe you can look up, look that, look into that, will you, Charlie, before you leave? Figure out why the times are different?
Space-time continuum, just play that out.
I don't know about you, but my, um, my new business was from November of 2013 for the longest time tonight, and I just managed to get the, the current version. So, we all seem to be having somewhat different problems there.
Claim it on the new girl. We got a new IT person, right?
Oh, no.
That's what I do.
Mine's fine.
I, no, mine's working, I, human error on my part.
No.
No.
I think she'd all be pretty happy that we're ahead of schedule on a night like tonight.
Shh.
Around the last hour.
Alan, you have to prove read all those too.
Yeah. I would, but I have this splitting headache from a bucket of ice water.
Can't believe you have let somebody dump a bucket of ice water on you.
Twice.
Who did the dumping?
We all swapped.
It's all on film.
It is?
It's a cohesive unit of people dumping ice water on each other.
Diane.
You did?
No, Diane hasn't.
Amazing how well potties can work together, when we're dumping water on each other, isn't it?
Pouring ice down each other's back works good. They should try that in Boston, in Washington.
Hey, um, actually, Charlie, can you look into something for me, since we're not doing anything right now?
I think it's 8:30.
This is quick, this is quick. There's, uh, there's a whole bunch of poles, and I bet you, Mr. Norton noticed this too. There's a whole bunch of telephone poles that are double poles on, uh, Pierce Street, which then turns into Frank Street, and, uh, and they dug up, the dirt is, it is, it is not a finished job by any stretch, and it's been that way for some months now, and I was wondering if you could have somebody look at that?
Pierce, Pierce Street to Frank Street?
Yeah, all through there, where there's...
Basically, from the library all the way down.
Yeah, I'll hazard a guess that either Comcast or Verizon hasn't gotten their, I mean, are these new poles, and then the old poles still attached, or?
Yeah, there's a short pole holding up the longer pole, and there's, there's dirt everywhere, like, it, it is not a finished job by any stretch.
Yeah, it's very patchwork, the poles are actually attached with crossbeams in some places, and it's full scale.
It's probably Verizon.
Well, I, I...
More than Comcast.
Well, and, I mean, like, you can't get by the mounds of dirt in a wheelchair, I mean, this, this is an issue, so, good look into that.
We'll do that.
But, the, uh, the work going on at High Point, the new High Point facility seems to be going pretty well. They, uh, they repaved the parking lot, they trimmed all the, uh, all the brush and everything on the sidewalks and everything, it's, it's coming along. It looks, uh, I think it looks a lot better than it used to, so I'm pretty happy with that.
Have to look much better than it did.
Yeah, yeah, that, it's not a hot thing. Um, all right, 8:30. There we go. The Board of Selectmen, acting in its capacity as the Board of Health, will hold a public hearing in the Selectmen's Meeting Room at Town Hall, 10 Nickerson Avenue, Middleborough, Mass., on Monday, August 11, 2014, at 8:30 PM, for the purpose of approving Title V Septic System Regulations for the town of Middleborough. Anyone wishing to be heard in this matter should appear at the time and place designated. I believe that's you, Ms. Hassett.
Good evening. My name's Catherine Hassett, I'm the health inspector, for those of you I haven't met yet, and, um, I believe that Jean Spalding sent memos on the, um, the revamping of the septic regs. I think they're pretty self-explanatory, why she, um, felt the need for them, and, um, the, I believe the board has commented on them, and she's made the changes required by the board, as well as the town attorney. So, I was just here to see if you had any more questions.
Anyone have any questions?
No, you go ahead.
What's that on the side? Mr. Norton, do you have any questions?
Just about the second part, the variance regulation.
Are we voting on that now, or did...
Are we into that separate after?
It's, it's separate, that'll be said.
Okay.
Then, no questions at this point.
Okay.
Ms. Stewart?
No. Ms. Allen? I have, um, Middleborough's perk is 30 minutes, right?
At this time, yes.
Which is, um, different from the state's, is 60.
Yes.
Okay, is that because of the wetlands that we have so, so frequently, is that?
Yes, that's a big part of it.
Okay, and, um, we've been doing that though for some time though, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the other question I had was, uh, 200 feet from a well, that's the, uh, the field?
Exactly, yes.
And the tank? Is, is that what it has been?
It, it has, yes.
And, and where does that fall in with state regulations?
I believe it's 50 for state.
For state?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. McKinnon?
So, we're just a little, we're a little more restrictive because we have so many well waters?
It's a less than five-minute-per-inch rate.
Right.
Less that the concern is that the contaminants could migrate into the well water.
Okay.
Also, Mr. McKinnon?
So, uh, some of the things that were changed were floor levels to become more incompatible with, uh, more compatible, I should say, with, uh, the C, Code of Massachusetts regulations, that's basement floor levels and so forth?
Correct.
Okay, um... If somebody was to do a project to their house, and was to increase the, or let's be say, uh, more than 10% of the value of their house for the cost of the project, even though it may not, say it's a garage, they're going to put a garage on, um, and they had a cesspool, because of the cost of the condition, would that trigger Title V inspection?
Usually, it's if they're adding habitable space to a home, a garage, if it doesn't have habitable space above it, doesn't usually entail the septic system.
There was a, the reason I bring that up is there was a, I have a friend in another town who was adding a solar field, basically, solar panel field in his yard, and because of the cost, the health inspector wanted a Title V inspection, which would have failed his septic, his, his, he has a cesspool, but it works, it works fine, he has it pumped all the time, but because cesspools are not allowed, this solar field would have triggered him to spend who knows how many thousands of dollars for a septic field, septic system. So, I understand the reason to remove cesspools, but I just don't, I don't want to get, I don't want to become too costly to the people, you know, I, I, we want to protect the groundwater and all, but there are some areas in town that it's just not going to work because of the layout that we have already, so, it's that. Same case here, would that happen here, if I were to add a solar field to my yard?
Solar field, I don't believe that would require a Title V inspection, the way the regulations are written.
Okay, that's it for me.
All right. Any other comments, questions? All right, close the hearing. The hearing is closed, and how do you guys want to vote on this?
Motion, huh? Motion to approve the regulations?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the new Title V regulations. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passage to Namsley. All right. I'll open up a, do I open up a new hearing for this? Well, I guess I have to, since I just closed it, right?
There is no hearing, I noticed the second thing, it was just added.
All right, let's, um, have a discussion on adopting the variance regulation. Anything you want to tell us about this?
Um, basically, this was, uh, suggested by the town's attorney to give people the opportunity to ask for variance to regulation, most of our other regulations have this, um, option, and, uh, when somebody asks for variance, the, uh, it's weighed out to see, basically, that we want to meet the maximum feasible, um, protection of the environment and the health of the community, so that's why this particular, um, variance regulation has been proposed for its same ability.
In fact, if you look at, um, the regulation you just adopted, in 5.01.1, there is a variance section in your septic regulations, but you don't have a variance sec, um, section in your local Board of Health regulations. Uh, so, basically, you're just adding what you have in your other, you know, the, I think, in several of your other regulations, you have the same kind of variance language, so Dan suggests that it would be useful to have it in your local regulations as well.
So then the people can go, if they, if they require a variance, they could go to the Board of Health, to the health agent, and then if the health agent denies it, they could come to us.
Right.
As long as the folks have a chain of how they can go, I think that's good.
Mr. Norton?
No, I, I just wanted to say that, uh, I thought this was a great idea. This would apply to any Board of Health regulation, not just Title V, anything at all, that individuals, if they feel, you know, that they don't need to have that applied to them, can make a case for it, and as Mr. McKinnon said, if they disagree, they get to come to us. Um, I also, I like the fact that there's no, uh, cost involved for the applicant. I, I think that's great, I think that's long overdue.
Any other comments, questions?
I think the, um, variances are very broad and kind of big, um, but I, I wrote that up at the last meeting that we had with Jean Spalding, just in general. I think it sort of makes it difficult to have consistency in granting variances, but I understand that each case is very fact-specific, so, just a general comment, I'm not opposing it, but...
All right. Any other comments, questions? I don't stand a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passage to Namsley, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You could have joined for 15 minutes, I mean...
All right, well, that's your job.
If anyone else, we...
Stand a motion to adjourn, 15 minutes.
So moved.
Back at 9.
Recession, why don't we do a recess, 15 minutes?
Yes, so moved.
Stand a motion to recess, 15 minutes, and turn at 9.
Okay.
Motion to reopen.
Second.
We get a motion and we're reopening now.
Okay, the motion. Move back for the session.
All right, so.
I will open the hearing.
Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing at the Selectmen Meeting Room at Town Hall, 10 Nickerson Avenue, Middlebury, Mass. Monday, May 12th at 8:40. That's as 8:40 PM for the purpose of discussing an application filed by Marcus, Arico, Emmer, and Brooks, PC on behalf of Cumberland Farms Incorporated for a special permit under the Water Resource Protection District bylaw to allow for the raise and rebuild of a convenience store and gasoline station at 150 South Main Street, Asses map 581, lot 4265, zoning district, general use WRP District Z2. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated. Good evening, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, this is a continuation of the hearing that was postponed from some other day.
June 2nd, June 16th.
July 28th.
That's on, July 28th.
All right. So are we all set now?
Jackie feels much better now, we can continue.
She looks ecstatic about it.
I feel bad that you just read that whole thing right now.
Good for him, it's the ice.
Good evening, gentlemen, how are I?
Good, Doug Troy, I forgot what our office, Lewis and I was Matt Leiner of Civil Design and Barry Cottin of, who's our traffic engineer, Phil Henry, who was the traffic engineer for his projects on vacation this week, and Parker is here to, to, to speed on what changes we're doing today. As this board will recall, we actually had the original public hearing on May 12th, 2014. We went over in great detail the proposed project and towards the end of that meeting, the one issue that was, that came up, was a concern that not only his board raised it, but also certain town officials, was the impervious numbers in which we were proposing. At the time that we were before you in May, we were actually increasing the impervious use on the site and there was a, my interpretation of the bottom off at the time is the reason why we were leaving and thought we were in compliance and after that meeting on May 12th, I actually sat down with the retail manager and the building inspector and went over the plan to see what we can do to bring ourselves into compliance with the impervious issue and as a result, what is for you tonight. And the approach.
Sure.
This is a handout.
Thank you.
Of what is on the board, but always wanted to have an action from you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In essence, we have, and I want to let Matt go into the specifics, but just in general, we have eliminated a drive onto Clark, East Clark Street that we were looking to propose, which gave us a substantial amount of green, which allowed us to bring our impervious actually 1% better than what it currently is today. We also, this board mentioned at the last meeting, we had a, the front landscape buffer is zero today, we had increased it to 9.7 in May, but as of now, we've actually are in full compliance and found a way to bring it to 25 feet. Those were the two major concerns both this board and town officials had and we kind of went back to the drawing board to see what we could do on the site to bring it into compliance. As this board is aware, property is located in general use district, which retail use and road vehicle lot services are allowed as a right, however we are in the Water Resource Protection District Zone 2, to which gasoline sales are prohibited. Good news for us is that it is a pre-existing non-conform use, there's been a gasoline station on this property since that being announced, next on Mr. Owen. We purchased the property, I believe, in 2003 and actually leased it out to a tenant who operated at Gulf Express on the site. We've actually took over the lease since January 2014, operated for a few months and now shut down at the end of June. We just made a business determination to keep it open, which was something that we're generating there and we really want to focus on making the appropriate changes to the site, focus on rebuilding and location. I am, I think the best thing is actually just let Matt go, there's some other changes which we made, I'd love to bring to your attention and then kind of open up to you for questions you might have and I can go into as much detail as you want, but we take go into the pre-details before, Matt?
Sure. Again, Matt Leiner with Civil Design Group, Phil Henry, Phil Lander, he's been before you three times in the past and Doug actually stole a lot of my thunder here, part about some of the changes, but I'll just give a brief overview and then feel free to ask, stop me along the way, ask questions if you want to go into greater detail on the items that we talked about. But again, the modified site plan reduces the impervious to just below the amount of impervious that's out there today in existing condition. So when you look at it, the configuration of the store itself and the pumps is still very similar to what was proposed before, but it's what we did around that that really had an impact on impervious and brought it down. As Doug mentioned, the biggest impact of bringing that number down was eliminating the driveway, existing driveway that we had previously proposed to rebuild and became as a driveway coming off of East Clark. So that eliminated the driveway itself, which was a fairly long run of driveway to get into the site, so a lot of impervious area in itself is to get up into the site. And then there also used to be parking along the short end of the building here that is now gone because we eliminated that driveway. Now, we had to gain a few spaces, actually four spaces on this end in order to keep the parking down compliant and zoning, however adding those in where we previously had the driveway proposed, that really didn't add much impervious area, so there was much more efficient use of the parking spaces over here next to this access drive than there was up here alongside the building. So that change brought the impervious number way down. We also eliminated any surplus parking, so we come in now exactly, that required a new parking spaces for the subway. As Doug also mentioned, the landscape buffer out along South Main Street has been increased to meet the 25 foot setbacks, so adding that additional space also helped reduce our impervious area. We did slightly narrow up the sidewalk on the front of the building, that helped us gain a little bit more of a compact layout and then we also eliminated what was previously proposed to be a patio area alongside the concrete patio. So, all those factors combined are what enabled us to achieve the impervious number of use setting below that is in existing condition. But that being said, we're still left with a 45 square foot building that was previously proposed, four multi-product dispensers that were previously proposed, the two new underground dual-wall stores, tanks. So fundamentally, the elements of the site are all still there that we originally proposed. Another benefit of this layout being slightly more compact than the previous proposed layout is that we were able to reuse the two existing driveways, which aren't even brand new, on South Main, so the impervious sidewalks, all that stay and then we just beat up to the back of the roadside, so we're not disturbing anything, any of that rework out of the way. We got a follow-up here with you, now, from the engineers, they made three comments on that letter and I actually spoke to Rich over there today just to make sure that we were on the same page, so we understood his comments, his concerns. One of them was relative to a butterfly valve that's proposed on the outlet of the infiltration basin. Massey P requires, even though some infiltration basins meant the whole water and infiltrated into the ground, they require a valve and an outlet pipe in the event that for some reason the basin doesn't bring, you can manually bring it out and then go in and clean it out and whatnot. So that's what that valve is for. We proposed it a little bit further in the basin, within the basin than we should have, so it's just a matter of moving it along the pipe out a little further so that if you ever had to use it, you wouldn't feel the water that should access it. So that was actually a good comment, he said no problem, just shift it out a little bit and that resolves that. He also had a question about the storm sector unit, which is a water quality unit. The water is collected via trench drains, catch bases from the paved area and is routed through this water quality unit, storm sector, before it discharges into the infiltration basin. And he, they just want us to check with the manufacturer that the condition that we're proposing in, which is, once the water starts to accumulate in the space and it ultimately does submerge the pipe that goes into the space, and he just wants to make sure that that unit can handle the submerged condition. We're confident that it can be designed that way before we use their storm sectors, design software, that's your size unit, but we have no problem checking the storm sector, showing them what the, what the site specific condition is and if they have any issues, if they want us to go to a larger unit, possibly different insert inside the unit, we have no problem. And then his third comment is relative to DOT access and actually the drainage relative to the state right of way. So when you look at this plan in three dimensions, this driveway is actually higher than the parking lot, so it's actually, you drive in, you drop down, so we don't have any drainage, any superficial drainage exiting, you just stay right away from this driveway. For this driveway, this southern driveway, we put a trench drain, we proposed a trench drain faucet to capture as much runoff as we can. And when we designed it, we pushed it as far toward the right of way as we could while still physically being able to get the water into the basin outside. So there is a limit, but we actually were able to get it very close to the right of way, so the result is that we have just a small, high-shaped piece of water that she throws out into the right of way. It's actually much reduced from what goes out there today, much harder area that she throw out to the right of way today. We don't suspect Massey T will have any issues with that because we're significantly improving condition. But again, that's something, you know, we would work at it and ask you if you have any concerns and I believe that Lenick's concern is if we have to change anything about the site design as a result of that, then we come back to you to show you what change we have to make. But again, we don't suspect that there'll be any issue at all because we are improving what's happening. So really, that's the layout, the modification. If there's any specific items that I didn't cover or went by too quickly, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Other ones?
Thank you, Matt. With that, the Cumberland Farms, the project as it is, requires a special permit under Water Resource Protection District Zone 2, section 812, Section 3A and 812 along with the bylaw. It's Commonwealth Farms' position that we meet all zoning table requirements, the impervious aspect is a pre-existing non-conformity under section 812, Point 7, Group A, so long as we do not increase any non-conformities, we are okay. And that seemed to be the biggest issue that we had the last time we were finding is over national increasing impervious. So we did go back to the drawing board a bit and spent a certain amount of time talking with your officials as well as peer review and came up with this plan. I believe this is a part of the bylaw and with respect to the request that this board grants, Cumberland Farms a special permit.
Any comments, questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Norton.
I like the redesign to reduce the impervious. What is the actual impervious percentage on?
The actual numbers are, if you look at the top left-hand corner under zoning information, maximum impervious coverage goes from 44% to 43%.
Which I can't read on our copy.
I can barely read it myself. I apologize.
That's all right, no, that's fine. Hey, 44 to 43, I'm cool with that.
Well, it's going to be in the 50s before, so.
56 before, it was actually 57 before, so we had to make some significant changes.
It did a lot of work and I appreciate that.
Anything else, Mr. Norton?
No.
Ms. Stewart?
I have two questions, I don't know that either one are necessarily related to the special permit, but while you're here.
Sure.
Our conservation agent had sent a memo that said it would be helpful if the applicant can show they are greater than 100 feet away from the wetland depicted on the attached wetland mapping from the towns map geo-program. It appears that the proposed project is close to this wetland that is associated with the Namaska River. Do you have a plan that has the wetland line on it?
We actually do and actually provided the plan today to Mr. Costello, we actually responded to the ComCom's letter on August, excuse me, back in April, I believe, where we did provide a letter, if you want to show them specifically, that would be great. We are outside on our profile.
Right, and I believe that the conservation agent acknowledged that it looks like we're close, but just outside, but nonetheless, this year is 100 foot, so actually the property is entirely outside, so this corner is closed, but the property is outside.
Her memo is from August 1st, so I just wanted to.
Okay, no, I appreciate the question, but it is shown on the.
Okay. And my second question is, I think I brought this up last time you were in here, but the, so there's just one door to go in and out of the actual building in the corner there?
I believe that is correct. Is there a side door as well?
I think there was a side door, but.
For the public, there's a door in the front here and then there's also doors, this will notch out here, there's a door there as well.
So are either of those automatic, either low power with a push button or just simply automatic that opens when you step in front of it?
They are not, and I did take your comments to Cumberland Farms and it's not something they have done in any of the stores that we are aware of and it's just not feasible for, I don't say it's feasible, but it's not something we're proposing on the site.
Because they're just, I mean, they're regular doors that open out, so it could be fitted with a push button door opener, it's feasible.
It's feasible, but it's not something in which we, our understanding we are required to do, we have done and taken into consideration significant ADA issues currently, I don't believe it was ADA accessible restroom there, we are increasing those and Matt can talk about any other ADA issues which we're putting into it, but I did raise that with my client. Unfortunately, that one issue is not something which you're willing to add to this project.
Because you asked them again.
I can ask them again, but unfortunately, that one aspect is just not something we're willing to add to this project.
Mr. McKinnon?
I want to thank you for all you've done, what I needed to see happen, happened. The ADA aspects that were brought up, you really got a purview in this particular meeting, but I appreciate that you're addressing and looking at those. But, you know, you've done a lot of work on this and it's cramped your style some, to say the least, but you've done a lot of work and I really appreciate that.
I think it's a, I think it's a great plan, I do think we've come up with a plan, it's not only do you have a growing cross, but you're familiar.
Right, so I appreciate everything you've done on this.
Thank you, sir.
You've done work hard on this, I appreciate it.
I agree with Mr. McKinnon, you brought everything right into where it needs to be and I think it's going to be a great addition to the town as well as your other facility. Thank you so much, I know you're investing a lot in the town and we appreciate it and we appreciate you working with us.
I'm glad and pleased to, I realize there's certain things I can't provide, but we do try and listen, try and do it.
Yeah, I would echo those sentiments as well, I think it looks great, very happy with what you've done with it, I think it'll fit in very well with the look that you're going for with Cumberland Farms. Just two quick questions.
Sure.
Are you going to be open 24 hours?
Yes.
All right, because there's a need for a 24-hour gas station in this town. And if you could just ask, if you own this Cumberland Farms, to at least consider the low-power door for the handicap access.
I will definitely bring it to their attention and at the very least, what I'm hearing from you, it's not an automatic door like I would go to a grocery store, you're looking for a button so that someone needs that access, I will definitely bring it to their attention.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I will ask them again and see.
If you get it, she'll be at your ribbon cutting.
I understand, I understand.
I will, absolutely.
I can't make promises, but I will definitely.
No, we appreciate.
I think it's a reasonable request and I will go back to them and indicate that it's good stress, it's not a market, it's something which you can't.
We do, I think I speak for the whole board when I say we do appreciate all the extra work you've done to make this, like you said, a project not only good for Cumberland Farms but good for Middlebury. We definitely enjoy that spirit of cooperation.
Yeah, and just for the record, I'd be remiss not to say just how helpful, I know the staff that's in the room has been to help me through this process for not only the other project, but this project. the other project, this project, but also Ruth, Bob, and other officials who pursue issues in which we were trying to deal with, everyone has been very professional, and I think the cordial and professionalism has really allowed us to come to where we're here today, and I think you guys realize you have great staff.
We do, thanks.
Done.
All right, so do I close the hearing now?
Yep.
All right, I'll close the hearing. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McKinnon.
I propose that the board finds that the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the WRPD bylaws, will promote the purposes of the Water Report Resource Protection Districts, is appropriate to the natural topography, soils, and other characteristics of the site to be developed, will not during construction or thereafter have an adverse environmental impact on the aquifer recharge areas, water resources of the town, will not adversely affect any existing or potential water supply. The board votes, I propose that the board vote to grant a special permit to allow for the construction of a convenience store and gasoline station at 150 South Main Street, as requested by the applicant's application under the Water Reports Resource Protection District Bylaw pursuant to Section 8.2.7 WRPD Z2, Use Regulations 3A, enlargement and alterations of existing uses and structures based on the plans titled Site Plan for Cumberland Farms 150 South Main Street, Middleboro, Mass., or 2346, prepared by the Civil Design Group LLC and the Associated Storm Water Management Report, both dated July 16, 2014. Would grant the special permit with the following conditions: A, portion of the entrances will drain onto South Main Street and Clark Street East, Mas D O T approval will be required. Should Mas D O T require revisions in the plans, the plans shall be submitted to the board for their review and approval. Should the revisions not be accepted by the board, the special permit shall not be effective. B, after consultation with Atlantic Design, the drainage basin butterfly must be relocated for better accessibility, and C, the size of the storm scepter water quality unit should be confirmed with the manufacturer, a larger unit must be installed if local conditions require it.
Second.
Motion, second, any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No discussion on it, go home.